I was trying to save myself five dollars.
Let me start thinking.
That's right.
She always gives me that look.
You know the look.
I think we're here. Oh, when it...
She's right.
When we're rolling, yes.
Otherwise, I get in trouble and talk to you. You start too fast.
I don't think she'll do that to you just yet. Are we rolling, Patrice?
Not yet. Just talking over the Internet.
We'll call a special meeting to order. First order and only order of business is replacing the procedure to replace a resigning council member. Who's going to give us the lowdown on that? Which staff members? I think it's this gentleman here. Sean Mason.
The Charter does provide, in terms of what the rules are, very few rules. Basically, it's an appointment as opposed to an election. Under general law, you can have an election. So it's appointment by the city council, and if that appointment cannot be made for whatever reason, after 30 days, then the mayor will appoint the vacant position. So those are all the rules that are provided for in the Charter. And then in the staff report, we've outlined the various approaches the councils have taken over the last...
I didn't see his time.
Back to the early 90s, there had been four vacancies. So they've taken a variety of different approaches. And so those are outlines.
Thank you. Thank you. Only four? Four what? Four times?
In the 125-year history, only four.
No, just over the past couple decades.
Recent memory.
Yeah, recent, yeah.
So Maureen is set... Councilmember Frichette is set to have her resignation operative on?
On November 4th.
November 4th. Okay. So if this doesn't happen within 30 days of that, the mayor at that time would appoint, right? So I would venture to guess, if I may, there's a desire by the council to select the replacement so that we don't want to get up against that 30-day deadline, right? Is that fair to say? Can I at least cross that box?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So let's talk about having a procedure that would not involve just one person selecting. The whole council would. And you got choices. I was familiar with the one where Robert Ross left. Are there vast differences?
So in the past, they've had a situation where there was a relatively recent election. I believe that was when Jerry Hill got elected to the Board of Supervisors. So there had been an election months before, and the council at that time just appointed the next highest vote getter. There was a situation where an approach where they solicited written proposals and then appointed from the... based upon the written proposals from folks. And then the last... I mean, two of the times, I think they had advertised, solicited interest through advertisement, and then scheduled a hearing where the candidates made presentations, and then, following the presentations, appointed the council member.
Was there a written part of that one?
There was an application, yes, that had...
An application?
In a supplemental questionnaire, had questions for the folks to fill out.
Okay. Application, supplemental questionnaire, and then a hearing with a presentation, right?
Correct.
Okay. Sure, go ahead.
What are the rules in terms of... Well, I guess, you know, when we appoint commissioners, we try to make sure that it's very standard, we're asking the same questions, and also, like, we don't tend to interview separately. It's kind of one big interview process. Are there any restrictions on meeting with candidates individually and anything like that, in making sure that we're transparent and being fair?
There is nothing that would prevent that. So any individual council member could meet with individuals who are interested in being appointed. You'd want to be careful not to discuss that with the other members of the council so that you have a potential Brown Act problem. But you can meet with people individually outside of the process if everyone understands that that's something that you're all comfortable with, no legal reason why you couldn't do that.
Any questions?
So we have a questionnaire that was used at some point, or an application that was used at some point? We can say or not?
Yeah, I think so.
It's in the packet. It was for the last recruitment in 2015 for Robert Ross. So I just took it and changed the date, changed any of the questions or anything, waiting for your direction on that. I also included a sample timeline, but of course, that was constrained by the 30-day requirement at that point.
Any more questions from council?
No questions.
Okay. Do we have speaker slips? Do we have speaker slips?
Yes.
Okay, so let's open it up for public comments.
Okay. Speaker slips. The first is Chelsea Benini, followed by Lisa Diaz Nash and Lester Chen.
Okay.
If you could... Oh, you know what? It's not working. Yeah. Because we are getting a recording, so we need the sound on mic. So if you could hold this while you're talking.
Sure. No problem. Okay. Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Pappin. I'm Chelsea Benini. I'm here this evening to let you know that I am interested in being appointed to fill Mayor... Vice Mayor Frichette's position when she leaves at the end of the year. I believe that appointing the next highest vote getter from the last general election is a very democratic option and is definitely worthy of your consideration. Since November 17, I have remained engaged on many of the issues you are addressing. I have participated in the general plan process, and I've attended a number of planning and council meetings. I do feel that I could easily step into this role, including participation in regional work, as I have a lot of existing relationships with local officials in the county. As a quick reminder of who I am, I've lived in San Mateo for 20 years, 13 of those. I've lived in the Westwood Knolls neighborhood, which is at the southern border of San Mateo, as you know. I'm married. I have two boys. They're 11 and 15 now. My focus on public service is truly driven by my boys and my hope for a diverse and inclusive world that I want them to experience here in San Mateo and elsewhere. I'm a homeowner. I'm an attorney. I'm a former kindergarten and first-grade teacher in South San Francisco, for those who didn't know. I'm a community and school volunteer. I do that almost every week. I'm a disability rights and mental health awareness advocate. I sit on a number of boards and commissions. Right now, I sit on the San Mateo County Commission on Disabilities, where I'm also the chair of the Youth and Family Committee, and I'm the liaison to the BHRS Commission. And I also sit on the San Mateo County Office of Education's Personnel Commission, appointed by the Board of Education. As you know, I ran for council in '17, and in doing so, I gave up my seat on the San Mateo Foster City School Board because I thought this was an important thing to do. I ran in '17 because I really care about the city and the residents, and I wanted to be able to help work towards sustaining a healthy quality of life that includes everyone, even with the growing population and all the changes that we're seeing. I think that can include everyone. I'm a good listener. I'm respectful. I'm honest, and I'm practical. I have a reputation for being dedicated and committed to positions I take on. I embrace them completely, and anyone who's worked with me can tell you that that is just the way I am. I'm analytic, as attorneys are, but I'm also extremely empathetic and compassionate. I know that you will make a thoughtful decision about this appointment process, as it is a very important decision, and I'm hopeful that you will consider appointing me under one of the options that you have to do that. If you do, I promise to serve the city with integrity, and I will dedicate myself to working for the benefit of all Samateans with you. I appreciate your consideration, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have at any time that will assist you in making the best decision for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lisa Diaz Nash.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lisa Diaz Nash, and I'd like to first say that I think Chelsea is an honorable, wonderful person, and certainly someone who you should consider. But I also would like to say that I believe that the process should be opened up, and given the fact that it really is so close to next year's election, that there's the process that was, I think, number five in the document, which was asking for an open application, asking for a presentation by each one of the candidates, and then an interview process would be not only the most fair, but the option that would let most people participate. Because there's only essentially one year until the general election in 2020, and we need to get as many people as possible interested in that election. So I think by opening it up and advertising far and wide, having the interview process, and allowing people to make a presentation, and then asking them questions that are based on their application, not necessarily the same question for each person, then you all will get the best understanding of what the right choice is to fill out the council for the final year. So that was what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Lester?
I need a standing or a... Does it matter where I stand?
No, it doesn't matter.
Mayor Pappin, honourable members of the city council, esteemed staff.
My name is Lester Chen, and I just came to offer a suggestion. The suggestion is perhaps we could make this process sort of like a lightweight approximation of an election. You know, so as an example of concepts, so it's San Mateo United Homeowners Association. They host, I think, a very nice forum where all the candidates can come and speak. So the open presentation, that's one of the options, could be something like that in an election. Candidates are required to get signatures for the nominating papers. Perhaps that could be a requirement. Now, I haven't had time to... In transparency, I haven't had time to think through all the logistics of these. So these are really kind of more concepts than specific suggestions, because I do know that this has to be cost-effective as well. So in summary, just the mental model is some sort of lightweight cost-effective approximation to an election, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Next, I have Michael Reagan.
Got to have this, huh? It's like hot potato. Okay, I just reading that over. I would like you... For you guys to consider Mrs. Frichette, her positioning, and you know her quite well, you know her better than any of us, her positions on all the different items that came up. I'll give you an example as of just last week with the zoning map. And I was at that meeting, and I felt that her positioning on that was different than some members and alike on others, but I felt that, you know, her opinion on that was more in line with what I thought was the way we should proceed with the zoning map. So I wish you guys would consider, when you do elect somebody, knowing her, knowing how she stands on different matters, that she would... That you would elect somebody in her vein, somebody with her same principles and ideas of the city. I think that would be an important step, because I think that she would... I'm just speaking for her. You would probably like to see somebody that carries on the way, you know, her thoughts and ideas, at least for the year, and then next year, when an election comes up, if the citizens want to elect somebody with different ideas and such like that, they can go ahead and do something like that. And so that's my opinion. And I guess I was just reading the number five as a way of picking a person. That seems reasonably proper way to do it. I think the majority of people in San Mateo probably don't know this is happening, and I think letting them know and giving them an opportunity to get behind several candidates and having kind of more of an open forum on electing somebody would be a positive thing to do. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
John Ebner is...
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I would first like to express my support of Chelsea Benea as being appointed to this open position, just with a little different quirk involved, where I would like to see Chelsea submit an application within two weeks, and then the city council actually interviews her, and if there is a three-to-one favorite vote, then she should be appointed. If she doesn't win by a three-one, then I think the whole process should be opened up as either process three, four, or five, as outlined in the packet. One of my biggest concerns is that we don't rush through this process. Recently, we experienced trying to push the general plan update more quickly than was realistic, and a lot of people were left out of that conversation. We backtracked, straightened the ship a little bit, and have gotten a little bit more public input. My concern is that if we take these applications too early in this process, there will be folks who will not know that the applications are even being accepted, and there will also be people who will be intimidated by not having enough time to make their minds up if they feel this is a good process for them. So first of all, I want to support Chelsea. Secondly, I want to make sure that we do this, give this the proper amount of time and attention to get the right candidates in place for this application. Thank you.
Also, Drew is coming up now to speak.
I just actually more have questions, Sean. If you could repeat what you were saying at the beginning, I couldn't quite hear something about 30 days, and so there was... I just couldn't hear that part. And then the other question, which this is the question part, is just, is it replacing Maureen, like Vice Mayor, all the positions, or it's replacing one of the council people, and then there's a domino or a variety of who goes to what, who goes to what and stuff? I'm just curious how that process works. Thank you.
Okay, next is Jordan Grimes.
Hi. So I'm here like...
Hi. So I'm here like John, supporting Chelsea for a number of reasons, but mainly, she's the only person really in the city who got several thousand votes in the last election, got the most votes, but didn't quite make it onto council last election. I think she'd make a great councilperson, but should you not choose to do that, I would, you know, also recommend... Recommend. I would also suggest taking our time and making sure that all the potential applicants in the city, from homers to renters to everyone else, gets a chance to actually apply for the position. So, thank you.
Carol Steinfeld, Oregon Avenue. Carol Steinfeld, Oregon Avenue. I think the choosing the highest vote getter in the last election, which wasn't that long ago and was for two openings, is the most democratic way and the easiest way on top of that. But you guys are covered. There's no question of what was asked. It's just the most representative choice to make.
I have no other speaker slips. We'll bring it back to the council.
We're the mayor to respond to the questions. The first part was that the Charter provides the law with respect to replacements, council persons, appointments of replacement council persons to fill a vacancy. And the only rules in a charter is that it's appointed by the council, and if the council, for whatever reason, can't decide within 30 days, then the mayor appoints. So that's... Those are the rules, the legal rules as to how a vacancy is filled. And then, once the person is appointed to the council, I think the council will decide whether that person holds all the offices that the prior office holder holds.
Say that once they're appointed? I didn't hear the last part.
Oh, so the council would decide if the person who comes in to fill the vacancy automatically assumes all the different appointments that the prior office holder has.
With a few exceptions. For example, she sits on the TA. The TA is not appointed by us, so we wouldn't get to fill that position. That would be filled by them, and I don't know what else.
And then I believe that... Well, I know, as Vice Mayor, you should become mayor, and I believe our rules of succession provide that an appointee goes to the bottom of the list. I see the clerk shaking her head, so...
Yes, that is correct.
So I got that right.
Bottom of the ladder. Still, one of five. Okay. So we've got a couple things to decide here.
Actually, can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
We are in the middle of the longest period between elections that's ever happened in the country.
Yes.
Because we extended it from... When we went to even your elections...
Actually, in 1894, when they... No.
She was actually dressed for the occasion to hear that.
But this is the longest... I mean, ordinarily, we have elections every two years. This is the only time that I can remember where we went three years between elections. So it's been two years since we had an election. And if people... Ordinarily, someone would be... There would be a group of people running right now, and they would have already had to put in all of their ballot stuff and everything. So this is as far away from the last election as we could be.
That's right.
Okay. Did you have something to say? Or may I go over the items that we need to decide, and that way we can keep our discussion focused on that? So the first thing is a recruitment method. Then we've got to talk about timing of that method, and then scheduling any additional meetings. Those are the three items. Have I left anything out?
I think if the choice is to go through a recruitment process, I think the clerk's looking for direction on advertisement, how often, that's the thing.
Yeah, it'll affect the timing, certainly. Method could affect the timing. We'll just have to see how it goes.
Maureen's last meeting is?
Early November. November 5.
4.
4. Do I have the wrong date? Excuse me. November 4.
Would...
So you could conceivably leave that vacant... She's gone. She will participate in that meeting, and at the end of that meeting, we will conclude. There will be another meeting in November, so you could conceivably decide on the replacement in that meeting. Could you decide on the replacement before Maureen's last meeting? If... I'm just throwing that out. We are August now.
It's a little odd, and technically, you wouldn't, because there's not a vacancy until she's gone. So... But you could say, hey, we've decided that this is the person we wanted to appoint to fill the vacancy when it occurs, and so when it occurs formally, you have to take that action after she's left. But you could reach that decision beforehand, if you chose to.
Okay. I want to just look at that timeframe from 2015. Let me focus on that for one more second here.
Can I just clarify that a little bit?
Absolutely.
So Sean, you're saying that we could actually start the application process, whatever process we're going to decide on tonight, before Maureen actually vacates?
Yes.
So as in actually going so far as to select who we would like to appoint?
Right.
Okay.
So last time, you had a study session in January 5. Boom. Two days later, you got the application out. You started advertising over the next two... 10 days, as best I can tell? A little more than that? And then 15 days later, you had a council meeting? I don't know why that's important, but that one, but okay. And then, so when I go 22 minus 5 is what? 17? So there were 17 days... Actually, no, excuse me. What's 22 minus 7?
15.
15?
15. So you had 15 days from the time your application went live to the time you had a deadline for the application. Oh, it says 15 days right there. Just testing your math skills or my reading skills. Okay, and then you compile the packet of applications, send it to the council. So this looks like it's taking... And then four days later, you had a special meeting, interviews, presentation, and a ballot. And then, so within 25 days, the new council member was placed from the time you had a study session. a study session. It was twenty-three days otherwise.
The difference there was we actually had to do it, because it was vacated.
Promptly?
Yes.
Okay. We got a little more lead time here.
Right.
So that's something to consider, folks, if you would like to give more lead time once the applications hit. It looks like this is a pretty good application design that's attached to our packet. But if you have things you want to add, let me know. Rick, you look like you'd like to say a few things. So are you ready?
Yeah, sure, I can make comments right now about what I think about the process.
Okay.
I think, first of all, that method number one is an appropriate process, given that the next highest vote getter is somebody who, under certain circumstances, should be given some sort of consideration, because those votes are the result of a fair election, right? And aside from that, I have to say that I think the process that we used the last time, actually when Robert Ross stepped down, the one that's described here on the timing matrix, and actually in the other documentation that's been presented, is a fair and open process that allowed the people plenty of time to submit their application, allowed us plenty of time to be able to vet those applicants, read their applications, have them make the presentation. I think the presentation is important.
I thought it was really fair. I can't remember who won that process, but I thought-
Yeah, I'm not sure.
So how did you feel, I missed, I'm sorry, I didn't follow. How did you feel about the last highest vote getter? Were you on that?
Well, without talking about the timing right now, okay? I think it's a very appropriate way to pick a successor, because they ran in the election and they got, you know, I mean, a significant number of votes. It would be different if they didn't get, because obviously, if you look at the votes that happened in the last election, after Ms. Bonini, the number of votes that voters got dropped off precipitously. She was up in the field with the rest of us who ran. Okay, so-
Oh, but it's a stale election.
It's stale now. Right, understood.
So that's why, then, you had your comments about the other idea of an interview?
Which is number three, application and presentation.
So you like a presentation and not an interview? Where are you on that?
I prefer the presentation.
No interview? You don't ask questions, whether, as Ms. Nash said, about the person's-
Well, we're free to meet with people and ask questions.
That's right.
Sean just stated that.
I'm with you. So you like number three. Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Perfect. Councilman Rodriguez?
Okay. I have a little bit different take. So for me, I think that, you know, this is probably, I thought it was going to be another vote, but I think this is probably going to be one of the most important decisions we make this year. And for me, it's about getting the information to make the best decision, and get as much information as possible, but also in a transparent way. Of course, all of us will probably meet with the majority of the candidates privately, but I also do think that there's something to be said about a public interview, where I think the public commentator, Lester, said that I totally agree with. It's kind of like a condensed election, because we are quite far from the last election. I hear Ms. Bonini's points. What I would say is that should be used as a criteria as we're talking to everybody, but not shift the criteria in the beginning to say just simply, okay, we're going to give it to the next highest vote getter. But I think that each of us could use that as part of the information when, and if she decides to apply, we would be talking about that or weighing that. But so my idea was to, this is, if it was up to me, what I would like to do is have an application that has your standard, why do you want to do this, what's your resume, blah, 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 but maybe have a chance for each council member to ask three questions, that they want the candidate to be on the record publicly, on like where they stand on this or that, and then have, and then have a deadline. And then, after that deadline, and all these things are being made public, then we can have a, like a public interview or a follow-up or something. I personally, I sat through the show that was the presentations, and I didn't find them that useful. I don't think, I mean, I think if, I guess Joe was the only one here on, at the time, that, did they really sway your vote? Did you not, did you go in there one and thinking, oh, you know, I should, I should go with somebody else? I think most, most people have an idea of where they're leaning, that the whole show of some people giving a slideshow, some people talking about, you know, why their mini campaign stump speech, that, I don't find that particularly helpful. I find specific answers to questions that I have helpful, and I'm going to get them answered one way or the other, but I think it should be done in a public manner.
So are you talking, are you envisioning twelve questions then, if I'm doing my math right?
That would be twelve if there's no overlap, but I'm assuming that there's probably going to be overlap. And these are written questions, these are going to be questions that people can have a long time to think about. There can be a-
Same question for each candidate?
Same questions for each candidate.
But we might have some-
Sounds like number five.
And so, so then, what would happen, and we can have like a word limit or something to make sure, you know, somebody doesn't write books. But then, we could, if we wanted to, instead of the whole, you know, give your canned presentation, we could ask follow-up questions in public onto the answers. Like, could you clarify this, this or that, or maybe you don't have any questions, but it's all public, it's all very fair.
Okay.
That, to me, I think maximizes the information that we get, and the information that I would want to make the best decision for.
Let me ask you one question.
Yes.
How do you feel about a small opening statement before questions are asked?
That's fine.
But not this mini campaign stump speech, and only that?
Yeah, I mean, we saw pictures of families, we saw this and that, and, I mean, it's all good, but I really want the information. I don't want to know, like, you know, who you, did you take a picture with?
Meat and potatoes.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm with you.
And I also want to give the public a chance to respond to the public responses.
The public, say that?
Well, if we, if we do it the way that I'm proposing, all the answers will be made public, maybe a weekend time.
So they can see it.
So then if you say, well, what did you mean by this or that, and then that way, the public can weigh in on what these candidates are saying.
By reaching out to us?
By reaching out to us.
Are you, I got one more question then. Are you envisioning some sort of public comment, or would be just-
Well, there'd be like emails, where there's going to be a public comment, no matter what, I would think, right?
Yes.
Like, it's a public meeting. So there's going to be a public comment. I'm assuming we get emails. I mean, this is our constituency. They're going to have opinions on different candidates, different responses to questions. So that, to me, balances the information part, for we get the information we want, and question, on questions we think the public really cares about, but also the public gets maximum participation into that.
So it's kind of like any, if you don't mind if I want to say, it's kind of like any other agenda item, in a certain regard, only you're not getting a staff report, you're getting an opening statement, and maybe responses to certain questions, where there might be follow-up questions from council, and then we open it up to public comment. And are you envisioning, when you open it up to public comment, that would be after each applicant has gone?
Probably not. I would probably, well, everybody's going to have seen the responses, and I'm indifferent on that, but I would think there'd be public comment before. People would say who they want, why they think this is that.
Before the presentation, by each candidate?
Yeah.
Applicant?
Yeah, I would think, but I could go either. The whole point is just to get the questions publicly, and then have public be able to comment on the other details of the timing and stuff I'm less concerned with.
You're not married to?
No.
Okay.
Can I follow up on that just a little bit?
Sure, please do.
Is it the same, twelve questions to every candidate, or do-
The written ones. The written ones are the same, but publicly, in the meeting, we might, we might say, you know, I was a little bit confused.
What did you mean by this?
Yeah, you didn't answer the question there. Can you, you know, really, make it a little condensed little election. Like, they are, they're answering the questions that all of us had to do, to answer, in the many, in the twelve forums we took place in, or whatever. And it's just, and it's taken a chapter, I think the unions are very effective in getting people on the record and having to decide, like, on take positions. It just seems very democratic and transparent to me.
What was the questionnaire? Before you said there was a questionnaire. Didn't we speak about a questionnaire?
There are supplemental questions on that back page of the application.
They're generic, not issue-oriented, though, correct?
Yeah, they are generic.
Okay. All right, so you're suggesting it's issue-oriented. Okay.
One is, one is the easiest, but it's been a bit a little while. Specifically, Chelsea's been a busy bee on so many other committees and other things that she does in civic life and the service that she does. A lot changes in a couple of years, and I think that no matter what, Chelsea will be, will end up being one of the elite candidates that we consider. But I think for the reasons that other people have mentioned, that opening it up and giving people a chance, there are people who don't even know that Maureen announces yet. But all of us have already been getting phone calls from people who are very interested, people who weren't even thinking about this two years ago, and who now, this is the right time in their life, and giving them an opportunity. I think it makes sense to me. We're a year off from election. There's a lot of work to be done in this, in this year. So I guess I'm leaning towards something close to what we did last time with some of the changes that Eric mentioned, a fair, open, democratic process. And I'm excited. I think, obviously, we've already got highly qualified candidates who are interested, and there may be a few more as more people find out.
So wealth of riches.
Yeah. Is that number five, that I was leaning towards?
Which, which may incorporate some of Councilman Rodriguez's suggestions.
Yes.
It is a hybrid with some sort of give-and-take interview-wise. But I want to get back to Councilman Benia to have a chance to weigh in on some of these tweaking of the procedure here. Are you, are you okay?
Frankly, the hybrid that is suggested here would also be good. It's just different. Anything we can do to maybe elicit a little more of participants' feelings on current issues that we're dealing with now? That's what I think is the important thing. That's what I included in the presentation when I went through the process last time, you know, not only what I-
As you know, when you're a candidate, not only the labor unions, but many organizations do ask you to fill out a questionnaire that does have some more-
Questionnaire, and then interview, take questions, right? So, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, number five, which calls for vetting and a presentation, is good. The vetting could include questions they're just talking about. Three questions, all the same for each candidate.
Okay.
And the presentation, maybe instead of, I think yours was like fifteen minutes or something, it seemed like-
It was ten.
Ten. So maybe instead of ten, it's five, kind of presentation, talk about yourself, introduction, and then maybe, you know, ten-minute follow-up questions or something.
Powerpoint lights.
Oh, I'm going, like, I'm thinking opening is two minutes, but that's me. It's okay. That's all right. Well, compromise.
You can go fifteen with intermission.
Three minutes, thirty seconds. But you had a question for City Attorney?
Very, very quickly. If we don't fill the seat, does the mayor just get an extra vote on everything? That could affect the way that I feel.
I love it. All right. So if, if in fact, we're talking about coming up with some questions, I got to factor that in the timeline. What's nice is that we do have a little more time, because Deputy Mayor Freskett was kind enough to let us know and give us some lead time. So, if you'd like to know how I feel, I like the idea of getting some meat and potatoes. I like the idea of sort of an opening statement, and that would be the same for the written. You'd kind of have the chance to tell us who you are in the written, and then some meat and potatoes. And, yeah, I mean, I guess I could live with some follow-up questions in public. I, maybe I'll, I'm not sure I'll have a lot, but we'll see if it comes up. You know, that's kind of where I am on that. But you'd like to treat it like any other agenda item. If the council does have questions, they may ask them.
So let me comment on that. I think the follow-up questions is that where we get away from apples to apples, okay?
Okay.
We should let them each respond to the three questions.
Okay.
Do their best, right? But when you start asking follow-up questions, then you change kind of the nature of the question. Some people get to figure out by what they've heard other people say and say other things.
It's nuanced.
Yes, right.
Well, you should say what you believe in. That's number one, and number two-
That's the first response. That should be their only response.
Well, number two is, these questions are going to get answered. It's just a matter of are they going to get answered in public, or are they going to be answered in private? And I prefer they be answered in public, but-
Oh, yeah. No, I'm open to that.
But it will be in public on paper, and I guess my question really relates more to the hearing.
I don't think they need to answer them on paper. We ask the questions at the open meeting. Same questions for all three of them, or for the candidate, three questions.
But that is completely different, what I'm saying. I think the public should be able to read the responses and react to the responses and give us feedback-
In their public comment.
On who, an email form, and, you know, whatever they want to do, to give us more feedback based on those things. If we ask them on the fly, then it's just, then that's the main difference, why I was not saying that.
So I think that's getting really huge as a process.
How, okay, we're sending out questions.
Yes.
They got to respond to them. That's like in the packet. Then they're going to be given, it's almost exactly what happened last time, but they have to answer questions beforehand. How is that getting huge?
I just think we're going to get a lot of public comments.
Isn't that bad?
We're going to get public comments anyway, at the hearing.
So I think we should take a step back for just a second and decide a little bit more about the timeline, about how many applications we might get. So if we want to make the appointment at the second meeting in November, when do we think that that public forum would be? Would it be on that same day of the public meeting in November, or would it be a separate meeting, standalone by itself, where we are not making the appointment? So I'm thinking, and I'm also thinking about the step where we get the applications. If we got thirty-five applications, I'm not sure I want to have a meeting with thirty-five people.
We don't have to wait for November. Sean said we don't have to wait.
I understand. So, so here's what I would say. The first meeting for the new council member should be that second meeting in November. If you want to have a special meeting between the first and second meetings of November, where all we do is we have the public part of this, where we allow them to answer the questions and have any follow-up if we want to, we're also going to take public comment at that time. Before that, we will have had applications come in, and we'll have looked at the applications and decided how many people are going to make it to the public part. Yes? I mean, we might narrow it down from thirty-five to ten, or we might narrow it down from ten to three.
Like what you guys say, like-
Yeah, exactly, like the Sustainability Commission.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, too.
What are you saying? You're going to narrow on paper without allowing a presentation? Is that what I'm hearing?
We did that before.
Yeah. Depend, I mean, depend, if we only got three people who apply, we'll probably interview all of them. But if we get thirty-five, I think we should narrow it down to fewer.
We can set a minimum.
Fewer than ten. We don't have to decide that tonight. I'm just suggesting is, go backwards. The first meeting for that council member, the appointee, will be the second meeting of November.
So that's on the ninth, excuse me, the eighteenth of November. Let's get the dates.
Depending on how many, depending on how much time we think this is going to take, and how busy that second meeting in November is, maybe we have the public process as a meeting between the two meetings of November. Before that, we will have had to have an application process where people could apply, and we'll have to have a special meeting where we talk about the applications that we receive and decide who we want to interview. Is that possible?
Oh, of course, it's possible. I just wanted to mention, when you had mentioned the Sustainability Commission, we did have some thirty applications for that.
Eighty-seven, yes.
Yeah. And what we did was, we sent them out, and you guys, we did a polling, and then we took all of them who had, you know, five votes.
We could do that, too.
And to whittle down the field.
And I think that's fair, because after the written responses, and after, you know, our meeting with the candidates, probably someone private, if you do not, if you do not have a certain amount of support going in that process, if you're not in the top ten, or if you're not top five, or whatever we say, then chances are, so we can really focus on the top, top-tier candidates, I think, if it makes sense.
Yeah, I agree to that. I think that's a good process.
Does the mayor agree to that? That's the only thing that matters.
Thank you for acknowledging that. Now, so you're, you're talking about whittling it down by, let's say you get thirty applications, right, and you get, we're looking at them, and then you, you decide on the ten you like the most, and you vote for those ten?
We stop polling.
And that determines the pool of ten?
Yeah. Yeah. Or five, whatever we decide on, okay? Because five is funny to work with at the meeting.
Certainly, certainly. I just, what if there's, I can vision there could be a tie. Like, you know, there'd be ten candidates that got five, oh, is that-
Then we take eleven, or, it won't be a hard cutoff, but we'll just make sure that-
It's the top vote getter?
We're just trying to make sure that, that we're focusing that second round, I guess, is what we're talking about it, on the candidates that actually have the highest, the highest chance.
Okay. So, okay, so that'll be the ones that have the most votes?
So I think how it broke up when we did it with Sustainability, is there a couple who had five, and then there's some that had four, out of the five of you, and of course, we're doing four here. So it would be four, and then three, and then you look and you see how many that is, and you say, oh, it's reasonable, let's go to who has two or not. You can look, because you can see from the list.
And you could always round up for a tie, right?
Yes.
And the other thing we could do, I mean, this might be getting too complicated, but we could also say- but we could also say, you know, if one, if one council member really has a candidate they really want to go through the process, you know, they could, they could say, you know what, I really want this person to go on there. And that can be like a, like a pass or something. If you're worried that, you know, somebody might fall through the cracks, we could do that too. I mean, the whole point is just to make sure that people that, that really probably do not have a good chance because they don't have any support after the first round, do not take up time in the second round.
And the first round is with no interview?
I have no intention of getting into a three-hour conversation about how we're going to whittle, but I, I wanted some agreement on, here we make the appointment, here we have the public interviews, here's when they have to turn in the, the application by, and at some point after the applications are in, we whittle it down to the number that we're going to, I don't care how we do it, we can decide during the meeting how we whittle it down. And like the mayor said, it could be, we don't have to pick a number right now. We could say eight, eight or 10, 11, 12.
No, I understand. I just want to be clear, we are whittling without an interview, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Based on the application.
That is something that new came, came up, okay? Without a here, without a presentation. But we will do our whittling in public at a special meeting.
Yeah.
You guys with that?
I'll do that.
Okay.
Is there a choice?
And that's smart because if there's three candidates, that's easy.
Oh, yeah, the Brown Act, forgot about that. Okay, so let's, let's talk a little bit about this. So 11/18 is the day we're going to swear the person in. And if we back up from there, what is a day that you would like to have a hearing to do the whittling down from all of the apps?
Does Veterans Day work or should we do it on the Tuesday?
Veterans Day, the city's closed.
Tuesday?
The 15th, when is Veterans Day?
We can back into October.
The 12th. The 11th hour of the 11th day, of the 11th 20th?
Oh, yeah. I'm not here on the 11th, just so you know.
We can start the process in October.
Tuesday's the 12th, right?
I'm looking, sorry.
Tuesday is the 12th.
Thank you.
What's the 12th? What are you talking about?
You wouldn't do it on Monday because it's holiday, you'd do it on Tuesday, the 12th.
Oh, I'm here and, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, Tuesday's the 12th.
So you're going to do your, see, my feeling is, I would like to have the interview separate from November 18th. I want the interview and the vote to be taken before November 18th and the person just comes, gets sworn in and way we go with business.
So the 12th?
Right.
12th? Are you here the 12th?
Yeah, I'm fine. I thought we were talking October. I'm good. So the 12th is fine. What do you want to do on the 12th?
On the 12th, we have the public process for the people who went, made it through to the second round.
All right. When do we do it in the first round?
They answer their questions publicly and-
Fine by me.
And then we make, we make it, we take a vote at the end of that meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And then they start the next meeting by getting sworn in and then they're on-
11/12 is what we're going to call showtime because that's where presentations are going to happen. You with me?
Yes.
The mayor calls it?
Calls it showtime.
Showtime.
November 12th, okay. Because I really feel we have business of the city to transact on the 18th and let's just get the fifth person-
So we interview the survivors.
So as we back up from November 12th, what is a good time to meet, to whittle down? How much ahead of time would you like to do that? Let's ask you that.
Do we have a currently scheduled study session before the November 2nd meeting?
Yes.
Nothing, nothing important.
The November 4th meeting.
November 4th?
November 4th.
November 4th, we can't because this, well, we can, but we have to do it in December because of the 11th, we have four-day polling place in here.
Oh, that's Election Day, the next day?
Yeah.
Okay. So why don't we do this? Do you, is anybody willing to do Monday, October 28th, just call a special meeting to get in here and whittle down? Is that okay with you, Rick?
Yeah.
What about you, Monsieur? I don't know why I feel like calling you Monsieur tonight. You look that way.
I might be-
It's a Monday.
I'm going to be exhausted from dwelling. Okay.
All those Halloween parties over the weekend. The 28th, are you with me?
Yes.
And you can deal with that?
I can do, I can do.
And what about you?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Okay. So we're, the whittling down meeting is October 28th?
Right.
Okay. And then from there, let's just talk about when you want applications due and when you want them to go out and that kind of stuff. Because we have to figure out our questions. And how is this going to work on the questions? We're going to do that in a study session or we're just going to submit them to the clerk and she'll tell us how many duplicates?
Yeah, I think that that is probably the most efficient way to compile them and then we could bring them forward in a report at a study session where you-
To just sign off on them.
Make sure, yeah.
Okay. So let's talk about a study session.
So if you put them out on the 7th and you say there's two weeks for people to apply, right? That takes us to the 21st, which then gives us time to look at the candidates between then and 28th.
So the, the study session on the 21st to look at?
Well, if you put, you need, you need two weeks for people to apply, right? So if you put them out on the 7th, October 7th?
October 7th, thank you.
Then they're due by the 21st, two weeks, right? And then that gives us time, a week, council members, a week to look at council members and see what we think, I mean, applicants, see what we think. And then we meet on the 28th, we decided already to decide how to whittle down the field.
And then 11/12, we do showtime and a morning.
So October 7th is when we meet to come up with the questions. Is that right?
Okay. We, we might want to meet before that to come up with the questions.
Yeah, if your applications are going to go out on the 7th, you want the, the questions appended to the application.
Okay, cool.
I think so, yeah.
All right, so that takes us into September.
Yep.
So we could meet-
September 16th at our study session or you want to come separately for that?
Study session.
Study session? It's the same prize.
Study session on September 16th.
You get all these council members with the same prize.
How do you look for that?
I'm looking at right now what we, if we have anything. Of course, this takes-
September 16th?
We can adapt.
Would you like to do it before September 16th?
Do you think we can adapt to that?
We can't do it this, this coming, yeah. Two weeks from today, we will hammer out the questions. But say-
I mean, shouldn't the, can, can the question just be as easy, like we're submitting three questions and the Patrice or whoever in her team just, like, will say, these two are similar, is this okay? And it's almost, it's not really a discussion, it's more of like consent calendar item, like, you know, it's, we're probably going to accept it, but maybe, oh, that's not exactly what I meant, let's tweak that word. But it's, I don't think it's this big thing, right?
Yes, we will give them to the clerk ahead of time, so let's talk about that date.